Good afternoon, we'd like to welcome everyone to our work session. Today is Tuesday, May 23rd. All board members are present in the boardroom. And that includes members Wilson, Lessons, Jacobs, Holloman, Higgins, Donley, and Bellamy. We also have Dr. Bryant, our superintendent, as well as our executive assistant, Ms. Amanda Foster. Also in the boardroom, we have several of our staff, senior staff, that will be either presenting and/or just listening, so we welcome everybody to our session. So with that, I don't have any board, we're going to item B on the agenda. I don't have any requests for information that have not been either prioritized or completed. I'd like to open the floor briefly to see if there are any requests. You can always send those in whenever you think of them, well, maybe think of them twice before you send them out. I'm looking at member Jacobs. Anyway, seeing none, let's move on to our discussion item today, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Bryant.
Thank you, Madam President, and good afternoon. ASD Board and Community, our first of two work session topics will be our College Career and Life Readiness Initiative. This will be a major priority going into next year as it's directly aligned with our board goals and guardrails. We are in the midst of planning for a multi-year CCL transformation that will put ASD at the center of the city's workforce development strategy and connect students with more opportunities to earn college credit, industry credentials, and high-demand careers right here in Anchorage. So I'll go ahead and pass it off to our newly-established CCL team, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bryant. So I'm a known quantity, but shifting roles. So I'm Kirsten Johnson-Srempler, currently the Senior Director of Secondary Education. Starting July 1st, I'll dive into this work more full-time as the Senior Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning. And I'd like to introduce Cindy Shippu. She will be the CCL Director. She's going to start her onboarding into this new role in the next month. And we have Larissa Rae Elson, who is our CCL Coordinator. So they're here just to be available for questions today. So this is your new CCL team, and we will start in earnest, full-time on this work in June, and be really focused in on it. And so I'm excited to share some of the work that's ahead with you today. Anything you want to say, Lings? No? Okay. All right, so Madam President, are you okay with me diving right in? Okay, all right, so I just wanted to start today talking about our College Career Life Initiative and goal, and just the work ahead by reminding the board kind of the three buckets of work that we're going to engage in as we really get going in the work. So the first is transforming teaching and learning. And underneath that bullet, you'll see some activities that will take place in that transformation of teaching and learning. The second bucket is transforming the culture systems and structures of schools. So there's a lot of structural change that needs to happen to also lend itself to transforming the teaching and learning in-house. And then a big part, which we've talked about as a group before, is transforming partnerships between schools and communities. So this is the community-based approach where we really bring the community to the table to guide us and work with us in classrooms, but also outside of classrooms with students. And so I just wanted to kind of ground us that those are the three buckets of work as we move forward. And if you look at kind of the roadmap, so again, just as a reminder, we're partnering with Ford Next Generation Learning in the work. They're coaching us along in the work. And this is the roadmap of different phases of the work to establish what we call our College Career Life Ready Initiative. And so we are currently in the envision stage or Phase 2. Phase 1 was really just about assessing what's already happening in the district that took place. They gave us some recommendations over the course of the last school year. We've really been working internally with our leadership and our folks internally, and then starting to outreach to some of our businesses. We have some high-level stakeholders that are really partners with us now. And we're starting to enter into the phase where we are more public with that envisioning, and we are starting to bring more partners to the table. We will go deep into that envision work as we enter into the summer and late and early fall. As we start the school year, we'll start to get into Phase 3, which is the planning phase. So if you go to the next slide, what this is going to look like moving forward, I wanted to give you some tangible kind of activities that you'll see happening. One is that we're going to start designating what we call a convening organization. So I'll talk a lot about what that convening organization is later in the presentation. But that's a really important outside entity partner that is a cheerleader essentially for the work and is willing to advocate and be a part of the work with the district. So we're going to really start onboarding all of our strategic partners around the governance structure. That's something else I'll explain later in the presentation in more depth. We're really going to start looking at research and industry trends so we can start looking at career pathways down the road as well, and have that input from our community and our businesses. We're going to really start to talk to our community about why we're transforming, and what it's going to look like and why it's going to be different. We're going to talk about a portrait of a graduate that we'll establish as a part of the work. And I'll talk, these are all things that I'm going to talk about today. So we'll get to more details. And then we're really going to start communicating out what is College Career Life Ready? Why are we developing career pathways in our high schools? And really start that kind of communication flow to our stakeholder groups and to our community. And so if you go to the next slide, in Phase 3, once we start really getting that word out there, we build that excitement, we have our partners in place, we're going to start having really active steering committee meetings. We're also going to start developing a master plan. That master plan is going to look a lot like a strategic plan and be multiple years. So we're going to start with a three-year plan, and every year we would review that plan once it's established as a district and a community. We're going to continue working with our strategic thought partners because that's how this transformation's going to really take place is with that input from our community and businesses. And then we'll continue, like I said, to have those master plan meetings. So there's going to be a lot of meetings of different committees, the steering committee, and lots of work going on. But there's a system to it that I'll explain here in a second. And throughout the process, we'll be working with our Ford Next Generation Learning Partners who are actively coaching us through the process. So if you look at this slide, one of the biggest things that's different about College Career Ready work that we're planning is a community-connected approach and having lots of different voices at the table. I think that's something from my work in the district that the board really values is that community connection and input. And this is really grassroots, work-with-your-community type of work. And so you'll see all the different groups that we're going to reach out to to really engage in that community-connected approach, like I said. So when we have committees, it won't just be district people sitting at the table making plans. It will be businesses, it will be our government partners, it could be all sorts of different types of partners, it will be parents and students as well. And so we will have lots of different entities working with us along the way and not be doing this work in isolation. So if you look at the governance slide, I wanted to just spend some time talking about how we, so we have all these committees and we have all this input, how does it get organized? And there's a governance structure that really works to organize everything for us as a district. So the first part I'd like to talk about is the steering committee. So we've already started to develop that with some of our high-level stakeholders. There are people like Bill Pop from AEDC and Sean Atoma from Northern Compass and some other high-level CEO types that have really worked with us this year. They've gone to Nashville, Tennessee, we've talked about that before, to really see this work in action in another district. And they're very committed to helping us, and we hope to grow that over the summer, that group. So the steering committee is really like that high-level governance body that we work with through the College Career Life Ready work. And those green arrows you see on the screen, those are two-way communication arrows. So there's, we're going to begin to develop a community-convening organization as well. And I describe that lovingly like a cheerleader for the work, but on the business side of the house, not an educator organization, so that they can influence in a positive way, educate people about what CCL is and what the district is doing, and champion the work in different spheres of our community than we're able to reach and get them to be a part of the work as well. So underneath that community-convening organization, you have someone who is a community coordinator. This is usually an entity that has the ability to help manage all the different business partnerships that we hope to establish through this work, and can really be kind of in the background helping organize that work for the district and in unison with the district. So you obviously have your Ford Next Generation Learning coaches that will be working with us. We have your operating team, which is us, sitting here. So that's your CCL team. And then you have lots of different leads for different projects that are tied often to tactic teams, which I will talk about here in a second. So another part of the governance structure of this work is the district, obviously. So the district's role in this work is to make sure we're following through, that we're staying true to students, and we are the ones that know how to educate students and are the experts in that. So when we go into developing a career pathway structure, industry may have a certain set of standards that people need to achieve, but we know how to educate kids, and how do we bring that together? That's our responsibility as a district, and to make sure we get kids to where they need to be at the end of school for graduation. So we are kind of like the accountability factor in all of it. And then the tactic teams, they're called tactic teams, which sounds better than just, they're really hard-working groups. And so that's where the meat of the work gets done. And on tactic teams, there is an ASD person that will run a tactic team alongside a business or a community member. They will be co-chairs of that tactic team. So you always have both the educator lens and the business-industry lens at the table doing the work. Those co-chairs serve on our larger steering committee as well, and advise that steering committee to the high-level work. So that's a really complicated structure, but it makes sense when you dive into it. And so I just wanted to go to the next slide and talk a little bit about the steering committee. I said that they're a cheerleader, but they're really an advocate out in the community for this work to happen. They also are bringing people to the table to help us get it done. So that's the short of the work of that steering committee is they're bringing the resources, both people and knowledge, to the table so that we can really do our due diligence to be a primary workforce development place. So if you go to the next slide, it shows some of the work that the steering committee does and their responsibilities in more detail. I've talked quite a bit about it, so I'm not going to read through this. But the big work of the steering committee is to keep the train moving down the tracks. So they're looking at high-level data for industry and workforce development. They're advising on if certain things along the CCL work are working or not working. That's part of their job as well. They may advocate for resources as well, and you know, work alongside the district. So if you go to the next slide, this is really where that community-connected approach comes again, which is including lots of different stakeholders. So it's not just one type of person sitting on the steering committee. It's really bringing the community together into a group to work on what's good for kids when it comes to the transformation of College Career and Life Ready. So switching a little bit to the community-convening organization, this is someone typically that has a lot of leverage in our community that can really put this as a forefront of something that we really want to do as a community, not just as a district. So a lot of you have heard Bill Pop champion this work in the community. This is something that him and I in AEDC are actively talking about as potential for AEDC and Bill Pop to be that community-convening organization so that we have that business influence and kind of power to get the work done. So if you switch to the district, this just outlines a little bit more specifically what the district's role in the work is. So they obviously support schools. We provide the resources and the leadership that they need. We provide the direction. We just, we really, the district's role is really to make it all work for everyone. That's our big role, is to be the center of coordination essentially. So if you go to the next slide, our work as a CCL team is really to do the background work. So we're going to be the ones that plan events in the background, that we reach out to folks to make sure that they fit into the work that they want to because there's a lot of different communications that need to happen if we have all these partners. So we're making sure that the ship carries on. And so we're going to work closely as well with the schools for implementation. We will also work really closely with the Ford Next Generation Learning coaches to make sure we're leaning everything we can from other communities and not making mistakes that could be avoided. And so we were really the support for the work. So one of the big beginnings, I would say, as a community, the CCL team here, Devin Roberts, who will also be our CTE Assistant Director, we will all be doing a number of outreach kind of efforts over the summer to collect our partners and engage them into the CCL work. One of the first things that we would like to plan as we move forward is what we are calling a community convening. So this is a large gathering, thinking of somewhere between 200 and 300 people. It would be people from our district of all walks. So we would have teachers, we would have district leaders, we would have principals, we would have parents, students. We would also invite many of our different community and business partners to the table to really discuss what do we want out of a graduate. And so what we would develop is something like what you see in front of us, which is the portrait of a graduate. So what do you want kids to graduate with in terms of the social skills, life skills, actual academic skills, work habits? It's going to be a really great guided conversation with lots of different stakeholders at the table to say when students leave Anchorage School District, this is what they should embody. And that's going to be our large goal moving forward when we start to talk about career academies and other types of career development work that'll be involved. And so this is the first step. The second step of that community convening will be to start to look at industry and workforce data so that we can start to have that conversation about career academies, which we'll dive into here in a second. And so we'll really take the input from the community. We'll look at the data for workforce development in our state. And then we'll also do an assessment of what we are doing well as a district and maybe some gaps that we have that we need to work on as we develop this project. So we have it tentatively set for October 12th, and we will likely be using a space at UAA as one of our partners in the work so that we have a large space for everybody to gather. So board members would definitely be invited to be a part of this process. So I put the date on there in case you want to, you know, reserve that date. Don't go to Hawaii on that day. So looking ahead, we've talked a little bit about the governance structure, but I want to kind of dive more into the school side of things. So this is a slide we've talked about a lot internally with our educators. We've had lots of meetings with department chairs, we've had lots of principal meetings, we've met as a cabinet, lots of different types of internal meetings that have taken place. And what we talk about is that, you know, Anchorage School District does do a lot of things really well. Every district has some things that they can improve on. So what we say is we have pockets of excellence right now. So we have pockets where kids are getting really great things out of our district, but it's not necessarily an opportunity that's available for every kid in our district. As we've gone through this school year and started to align our work so that we're ready for this transformation, we're starting to see impact with alignment. So the arrows are all kind of pointing in the same direction, but they're not necessarily working together, if that makes sense. So we know we're headed to the same goal, but we might be getting there a little bit differently. And then collective impact is when we're really working all together to get to that final goal. And for us, when we talk about College Career Life work, what we're talking about when we say collective impact, the end goal for us is really that academy work. And I want to talk a little bit about that today as well. Before I talk about academies, though, I've been talking a long time. I want to just pause in case there's questions, so.
Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. Appreciate the information thus far, it's really good. Is there an intersection between the steering committee or the governance structure for the CCL team and our current school business partnership committee?
There is, for sure, that's a great question. So we actually have actively worked with school business partners in their board to include them in this work thus far. So Colette, who is their executive director, is sitting on the steering committee with us. She's one of our first members. We've met with the Executive Board of School Business Partners as well to educate them about the transformation and the work that's coming, and have actively invited them to be a part of the transformation with us. So we see them as a real strategic partner in the work.
Other questions? Member Lessons?
Thanks, maybe I have two. Maybe I don't totally understand, and I haven't looked into it, but what is Ford Next Generation Learning? Is it like, what sort of an entity? It's a coach for us?
Yes.
Done this in other cities, could you just help me understand what it is?
Yeah, no problem. So I work with them all the time, so that's probably my error to not explain that a little better. So Ford Next Generation Learning is, they are basically a philanthropic group associated with Ford Motor Company, but they have nothing to do with building cars. So they're basically funded by some of the profits of Ford Motor Company, but their goal is to do career academy work in communities. So they have developed a system of coaching where they do, they don't come in, like if you've worked with other consultants in your careers, a lot of times consultants come in and have kind of a canned program where they say, well, you have to do this, that, and the other thing, and it has to be exactly this way. Ford comes in and they have a framework to work through, but they want it to be grassroots and they want it to fit the community. So their whole approach is to work side-by-side with the team in that community to do the transformation that we're kind of talking about today. So they're basically like really great coaches in the work, much like a coach would be in a sport, so.
And thank you. And then my second question, and maybe I'm jumping the gun here. I'm wondering how academies, as they come to fruition, will also work together, right, to supplement, not supplant? You know, when we educate kids in high school, they have to, there's a fidelity to state graduation requirements, right? You've got to get your social studies classes, your math classes, your science. How are we going to fit it all in? I mean, I don't really understand that yet.
Sure, and it's going to be part of the work we do in the next year to two years to figure some of those things out. We may need to have a conversation about graduation requirements. Are there roadblocks for kids that we need to move essentially? I am not necessarily an advocate of adding to, because I like to give kids choices in that realm. But those are conversations I think we're going to have to have. There will be the governance part that the board works with in terms of like approving graduation requirements. There will be other things like schedule changes potentially. That's part of that bucket of work that we talked at the beginning, which was transforming structures and systems. We may need to look at something beyond a six-period day so that students have the opportunity for career pathway work, but also have opportunity for band or orchestra or taking a world language because those are all important things as well. Fine arts definitely has a role in a student's career with us as a student. And so my view going into this work is that this is really about opening doors for kids. It's not about limiting them, so, yeah. So those are continual conversations, I would say, that we'll have as we work through this.
Okay, one more.
Are we, I understand that this is intended to be rolled out at the eight comprehensive high schools. How about alternative high schools, the homeschool programs? How will this be available to them and how?
Yeah, I guess. And that's something that we've wrestled with as an internal team because one of the things that's unique about Anchorage is the amount of choice that we have. It's an asset and a challenge at the same time when you do this work. When you go to some other communities, they don't have many of the smaller programs that we have for kids to choose from. So I think there is a role for this work. It may look different at comprehensive schools versus our smaller programs. But what I would say from the high school level, just having been involved with them pretty deeply over the last six years, as in my current position, is that a lot of our alternative programs do this work more so than our comprehensive schools already. So many students already are doing job training. They're going to King Tech more readily in other programs. So I think that there's definitely a role. It may just not look the same as it does as a regular comprehensive high school. So, yeah. Those are definitely, that's definitely going to be what one of our tactic teams is going to be. When you look at that governance structure, and I've already actually talked to alternative high school principals about it this year, is that I think that we actually have an opportunity as a district to lead the way in that work because of the choices that we have here in Anchorage.
So I just had a couple, maybe comments. Well, maybe one question. So I'm really happy to see that you're going to do the re-education about what it means, because when you say CCL or career life readiness, I think it means different things to different people. And so what does it mean for the Anchorage School District, for our kids, for our families? I think taking time to do that is very, very important. So right now, as, you know, and this was one of the toughest, it was an automatic goal for the board back in 2020. I mean, there was no question this is what the vision of the community was. We struggle with how do we even do it, right? So we have found a pathway to do it, which is good. So I'm wondering, how do we, similarly to what Member Lessons' question was, you know, how does it all fit under this? We have the CCL umbrella. Underneath it, we've got financial literacy. We've got career pathways. We're adding the academies. Or, so I'm just, the structure of what our goal is actually going to end up looking like is exciting, but I still can't quite see all the connections. How are we going to fit everything under that umbrella?
Sure. So I'm going to go, if you don't mind, Madam President, I'm going to go through the academies part, because I think it'll become clearer when you see an example that I have included. So I'll keep going and then stop again for questions.
Because I was really bummed I couldn't go to Tennessee. Because I thought, I mean, that was, to me, that would have been.
Once you see it, it makes a little bit more, yeah, more sense. So if you were at the soft launch event, this is a little bit of a repeat. But just to recap, what is, so what is an academy? Because academy can also mean lots of different things to different people. So in the sense of the planning that we're doing, an academy for us is a small personalized environment. So rather than 1,800 students in some of our larger high schools being all together in one big kind of group, we will break students down into academies. In this case, either a freshman academy or a career academy. And so they are in a kind of a school within a school, if you will, in that small personalized environment. I have that like quality assurance, if you will, that when they leave us, we can say, yep, you really achieved this and we're ready to send you out. And another assumption I think that people make sometimes is that if we are doing career academies, that we're not necessarily doing college anymore. We're just pushing kids to career, which is not the case at all. Like, there's choice for kids in this design. They can choose straight to career, or they could choose a two-year degree. They could choose an eight-year degree if they're going to graduate school and, you know, medical school and all of those upper-level college opportunities. So there's a gamut of choices for kids within this model we're going to develop. And then the other part is really developing what we call 21st century skills, which is those people skills, those social skills and attributes that we really want kids to leave us with in addition to their academic skills. So those are embodied in an academy. The structure, when you look at it at a school level, is that teachers would have common planning time within that academy to really weave their work together. So much like some of our middle schools have team time where they're able to work with each other, we would look at having academy time for teachers as well so that they can work well as a group. Students are cohort scheduled. That's that smaller learning community that I talked about. So they're scheduled within that cohort so that they don't have like their English teacher over here and their math teacher over here, and nobody knows each other, essentially. We have teachers that have a similar group of students and they can meet the needs of those students. They can also, if it's like, for example, a medical academy, teach through what we call the lens of that medical academy. So if you're learning about history, like you may learn about the history of medicine as opposed through that lens in your social studies class as opposed to just, you know, the textbook version of social studies and history. You would also look at intentional scheduling. Unfortunately, I think sometimes in an effort to get kids a full schedule, we were like, okay, well, fifth period, you can take gym, music, or this course. And there's not necessarily a plan around that scheduling. It's just about getting kids a full day schedule. And that's not necessarily a bad thing, because kids are interested in those things, but it doesn't have an end goal. Like, we want you to be ready for such and such industry credentials, so you need to take this course. You know, there's not that intentional planning for the long run. And then business and civic engagement. What we hope to plan is a lot of time for our students to be out doing things and for businesses to be in our school helping teach our kids. So you'll see that partnership through this academy structure. So looking ahead, for determining academies, because that's another big question, is like, how do you pick the academies? And each community the board partners with has a different set of academies, because it's based on the community need. So the first thing that we will do, and this is part of the community input process as well, is look at our workforce projections. And that's where AEDC is really important. The Department of Labor will be really important as well, and many other entities where we use their workforce data to drive the decision-making. So if we don't need, like manufacturing, essentially, there's not a lot of manufacturing that happens in Alaska because of our distance and the shipping costs. So I don't think we would stand up three or four manufacturing academies, as an example. But we probably would set up more than one medical academy, because we know healthcare is really an essential need in Alaska, and particularly in rural Alaska. But Anchorage really drives the state. So we also would look at our current resources. What are our facilities looking like? Because that's another part of the transforming structures. We may decide down the road that it's really essential for us to have a particular pathway in the Anchorage School District, because it meets a need. And we may need to start looking at our facilities and accommodating that. So that's part of the discussion as well. We're also going to look at who can partner with us to do certain pathways. We're going to look at students' interests as well. We will look at gender trends, like do we need more women in a particular industry? Because that may be some of the feedback that we get from our partners. And then we're going to look at the pathway sequence to get kids where they need to be. Most of our industry credentials that will probably be decided on will need to take place in more than one course, because they need, you know, the basic training. They'll need another class and maybe a third class to get there. So then mapping those out through a student's high school career will be a part of it as well. So this is a big conversation, obviously, that will take place over the course of the next year to two years. I wanted to provide a visual example for everyone, because it's really hard when you talk about all of these things to kind of organize it. And it was even hard for me until I really went to see it. This is one example from Akron, Ohio. They are a similar-sized district. They're about five years ahead of us in this work and this transformation. And this is what their academies look like at each of their high schools. So you'll notice in this example that every column is a different high school. Each of them have two to four pathways, and they have a named partner as a part of the pathway. So there's a business that is sponsoring that academy or career pathway in each school. So, and you'll notice also, as you look at this example, that there are some duplicates, because in that particular area, it's enough of a demand with the workforce that we need to train kids in more than one high school in that particular field. And so, so it's a complex system, but when you see it visually like this, it makes a little bit more sense. You'll also notice under the career academies that there's multiple career pathways that are possible. So in a medical pathway, I keep using that one just because I know it a little bit better than some of our industries. But you may have a nursing pathway, but you may have a medical assistant pathway. You may also have in a medical pathway, like a counseling or mental health kind of pathway for kids as well. So there's a variety of ways you can have an academy and then have lots of different interests for kids under that academy. So the other thing I think I want to, I'd like to point out in this example is you'll notice that there's still a place for IB. We have IB at West High School currently. There's still a place for that. There's still a place for their early college models, so that would be equivalent to our Alaska Middle College School. So there's still opportunities for kids who are truly college-bound or have a focus such as IB to still achieve those things, because they're important, but still be involved in career pathway work. The other thing I want to point out, and I can't, this is too small and I don't have my glasses, but there is a high school here that has a fine arts pathway as well. And I think that's something that comes up when we discuss this work as well, is where do fine arts fit in all of this? Because oftentimes, people will assume that fine arts isn't a part of that, and it actually could potentially be a pathway or an academy if that's what our data and our community wants. So that's why I was like, can I show you this? And it makes a little bit more sense.
It does.
Yeah.
So you're using pathway and academy in the same.
I know, that's my error.
So are we, okay. So are the academies creating the pathways?
Yep. So the academy is the overarching umbrella, and then there's multiple pathways underneath the academy. Yeah. So, yeah, I need to work on my language.
That's all right. You know, we're creatures that have. Member Jacobs?
Just a quick question on how Akron does things. So would, do students have a home high school and then attend the closest school that has the academy, like our students do King Tech? Or do they attend school and have one academic experience inside the building?
So they can do either, honestly. So what communities that have done this work have done is, they have given students the opportunity to attend other high schools for particular academies, if that's a real interest. What they have found is that most students actually like to stay at their home high school. About 90 to 95% of students in most of the communities that do this work, they're just, they have an affinity for their home high school, so they typically stay. But they do have a system, much like our lottery system, where they have an opportunity to go somewhere else as well, if there's an interest there. The trick will become, and a challenge for us to work through in this work, is the transportation. So just to be very transparent.
Okay, Member Lessons? So when I think about, you know, exciting new things to do in teaching and learning, I think part of that, sometimes you need different spaces. Flexible spaces, you know? A chair with a desk attached might not be the optimal thing to have hundreds of or thousands of in a school. So is part of this transformation going to involve rethinking, like the physical spaces that our kids are occupying and utilizing?
Yeah, I would say there's definitely going to, we're going to come up to some of those conversations. We have a lot of amazing facilities, but there will probably be pathways that we say, you know what? We don't have the space for this, and this is what we need. And that's where, you know, our six-year capital improvement plan would come into play. It may eventually mean we would want to bond for some reconstruction or remodeling. But it just depends on how big or small of a project it is. But those are definitely things that are coming. And it seems really overwhelming, but we're not going to do it all in one year. Right? So, I mean, when we started kind of looking at this work as a district internally, as administrators and talking about the possibilities, like this is really, this could be a 20-year project, honestly. It could be a legacy project where we're really, we get things up and running. We're continuing to improve, and it's really a long-range plan for the district.
On the previous slide, they all were freshman academies.
Yeah. So that's part of, if you go to the next slide, I wanted to kind of walk through a little bit, just so you can see the timeline starting to develop. So we're in the May 2023 dot that's on this. We started the Phase 1 in April of '22 at the beginning of that. We've done some work along the way, a lot of work, actually. And it's because I've been involved with kind of the architecture behind the scenes, what's really kind of nice at this point is that, like, there is a path forward. Like, we know what the work needs to be done. It's just a matter of executing it now and getting the community involved. So May of 2023, we just did our soft launch. We're talking about our college career life work here. In October, I talked about the community convening, so we can really gather that community input and start that very publicly. So we are shooting for freshman academies launching in the fall of 2024. So that's where freshmen would essentially have a year to learn about academies, learn about themselves, and get ready to make the choice for what they would like to do for their career academy starting their sophomore year. So that following fall of 2025, when they go into their sophomore year, they would start their career academy work at our eight comprehensive high schools. So the goal right now is to get it down really well for our eight comprehensive high schools, and at the same time, really start looking at career development for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, because as we all know, sixth graders are slated to move up to middle school across the district in fall of '24. So we would like to have some career development work happening at that level as well. It won't be as involved as current academies. It may be on a smaller scale, but we want them to at least be exposed to that before they move to the freshman academy when they get to high school down the road. And then from the fall of '25, we would continue to build up until we have a four-year plan at high school with full-fledged academies.
Okay. So in the interest of time, this is great, you guys. I mean, you're doing the work and you're not even in the roles yet, so I think that's awesome. And so we will, this topic will come back before us. For sure. And I think, are the slides attached to the? Okay. So in the interest of time, though, we're going to ask board members to submit questions, if you have any. The website has been updated, so you can probably get some of your questions answered there. But thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
We have one more presentation.
Yep, sorry about that.
All right. So on that note, we'll go ahead and transition to our next presentation. As the community is aware, a little over a year ago, we had to make a difficult decision to cease operations at Ursula Major due to concerns about the building's ability to withstand a major seismic event. So the team will share an update around a grant opportunity from the Department of Defense to bring the school back online.
And before you get started, we can extend about 10 or 15 minutes, if necessary. Okay?
Or we can not have questions. I'm good with that.
Not this curve.
Okay, next slide. We'll go real quick. Everyone's aware that we closed Ursula Major three weeks before school started after completion of a seismic level 2.3 assessment. And it was one of the last schools that had that assessment completed after the earthquake. So that took quite a while. It went really fast. Next slide. And when you look at what we were left with is, we really are crowded in all three remaining schools. And if you go to the next slide, no, actually, I'm sorry. I'll hand over to Colonel Mueller. He can introduce himself and he can talk about the new personnel coming in.
So I'm Colonel Kurt Mueller. I work in the 673rd Civil Engineer Group. I am the base civil engineer for J-Bear. So I handle all facility management, future construction, as well as utilities, environmental actions, so on and so forth. But basically, briefly to describe future expansion to J-Bear, it is expanding. J-Bear is a strategic location in the DoD and especially geared towards our fight in the Pacific. We are not shrinking. If anything, we are growing exponentially. There's various different things you can see there from Ted Stevens. see there, from Ted Stevens to the biggest buildup we currently have, which is the 11th Airborne Division expansion, as well as a couple additional bed downs that aren't on the list, but strategic bed downs that the DoD is looking at at J-Bear. So J-Bear is expanding. If you go to the next slide, this is what J-Bear is going to bring to the team. Some requirements, if a school is decided to be built, additional, or the school is decided to be rebuilt on J-Bear, one of the things we have to do, which is in environmental actions. It's going to take us about six to nine months to do that. However, the great thing about that is it can be done concurrently with any design or other types of things. However, the NEPA actions have to be completed prior to any groundbreaking or demolition of existing schools.
So when we closed Ursa Major, for those of you who don't have significant military experience or a lot of friends, the one thing that we started talking, the base command and Colonel Mueller and I, was there is a difference between elementary kids and middle and high on a military installation during deployments. When I first deployed for a year, my elementary-aged children had a really, really rough time. Because every time they hear on the news something bad happened, they would assume it was me. But by the time they were both in high school and I was deploying to Iraq, they assumed I was invincible. And there's still challenges and problems because you're gone for a year. But those resources that are available on an installation in support of elementary children, there's a lot of drama and a lot of stress on children. You don't even understand why their parent is not coming home. So we really did look at, not only is the base growing in size and numbers of people, but it probably is the most vulnerable population on the installation. And frankly, a lot of people wish that there will never be another war, but they've been saying that for about 5,000 years. Soldiers and airmen will always deploy. And so we felt that it was really important. In fact, it was the base commander and Colonel Mueller that met with Dr. Bryant and I and their whole staff, and really convinced us, although it wasn't real hard to convince us, that we needed to go after this grant. So there's a grant at DoD that's 80-20 match. So they pay 80% to rebuild a school, and we have to come up with 20% as a commitment in order to get that grant. And if you go to the next slide, you'll see that the cost to rebuild Ursa Major Elementary School, so a little over $51 million. So when we look at Board Memo 151 tonight, what you'll see is, we really do need a commitment from the board, not tonight naturally, but in two weeks, to be able to go back and submit our concept plan. Tom Finisef, his entire team, will be working with Colonel Mueller and his team, because there's a lot of different actions that will be happening in parallel. And then in July, probably before the board comes back to their first meeting, we will have submitted the concept plan to DoD. And that was why we had the urgency to try to get that money committed, because they can't give us the grant until we show the 80-20 match. When we did look at whether we could repair the facility versus rebuild, and one of the big things that this conference had, like several assistant secretaries, a general room full of colonels, was pretty high level. But the one thing they told us was, we fail if we approve any project that doesn't guarantee a 30-year fix. And you just couldn't do minor repairs at any cost. In fact, it actually would have cost more because of what we have to do. So our really only option was to rebuild in order to get that 30-year guarantee from DoD. And that's what this grant is about. It's for DoD schools, or schools on DoD installations. And I would say they were strongly supportive. They told us to move out, move forward, make this happen. And they've assigned us a program manager already, and they were pretty excited about Ursa Major. So if you look at the next slide, you'll see our milestones. We plan to move very quickly. We'll have a concept plan done by, probably shortly after 4th of July. Be working with the J-Bear team, of course. We'll submit that, and we'll start the design this fall, right after we get approval of the final submission, which we expect to receive. And then you'll see the following summer, we'll tear it down, obviously empty at first, and then the next summer, start rebuilding the school. And again, at an 80-20 match, it's better than any state bond debt reimbursement Alaska has ever had for any capital project in the state. It really is a good deal for us financially, for the taxpayers of Anchorage, and most importantly, for the children who live on post base. Sorry.
And one thing he didn't highlight is, normally grants are competitive. This is a non-competitive grant. The appropriation, the NDAA associated with this grant has already been approved. It's been approved at $637 million specifically for 12 schools. So if, as long as the community brings a 20% match to the table, the funding will come. So it's not competitive. We are guaranteed the money.
Wow. They did say that the biggest challenge was getting local education authorities to commit to the 20% match. Because, you know, by and large, normally it would be a bond. We have some resources available that we don't have to do that this time. And so, of course, a board can't approve a 20% match before they have the funds in hand. And you'll see on 151 that part of it is the, the vast majority of it is the FEMA reimbursement that exceeded what we used out of the general fund, which we had placed for, you know, a capital earthquake-related, which clearly this fits that mold, and just a little bit of the 37.7. So, you know, really, for just a couple million dollars, we're building a brand-new school.
Thank you. Questions? Member Higgins?
Yeah, I'll jump in. I can't picture a reason why we would say no. Is there any reason from an administration standpoint that this would not be a great deal and a great deal for the students? Support for the base, for everything? I just can't. There's always pros and cons, and I'm having trouble coming up with a con.
Okay, thank you, sir. Member Lessons?
Do we know what the building capacity would be? What would the expected student capacity be that we would be building for?
It will likely be between 400 and 450, and we'll be working that as we develop the concept plan and finalize cost proposal.
And would that be our prototype elementary school? Or would that have, would that be a different design?
Because we don't actually have a design yet that would start this fall, we use the deed specs to do cost estimates based off the amount of square feet. And over the next month, as Tom Finisef and his team of brilliant people get something closer, when you come back in August, we'll be able to answer that question better.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Member, hold on. Member Holloman, are you thinking of a question? You have one?
I do have one. It's a little bit off topic. I'm just wondering, looking at the growth coming at J-Bear, is there a known percentage of people that choose to live off-base versus on-base? And thank you for bringing more people. We need them.
Absolutely. I don't have a good, I don't have a good number of people based on percentage that live on or off-base. We do have about 3,500 homes on J-Bear. With that said, I am almost at capacity on J-Bear. The community is currently almost at capacity. So generally, people like to live where they can find homes. So if there's homes available off-base, I'm certain people will decide to reside there. Same thing with on-base. Sorry, I know that really didn't answer the question, but.
But, yeah. Well, since 2015, when there wasn't enough, they went to privatized housing. So it's a private company that owns and controls the housing on-base. And it might have been 2014, it was right before I retired, but they started letting DoD civilians and retirees live on-base in order to get maximum utilization of the housing. And naturally, when you have soldiers and airmen coming in, those opportunities for those individuals are probably less.
And I would think some parents who are military personnel would bring their kids with them to work when they come to work on-base, so that they would attend school on-base.
Actually, we had that discussion. The base commander brought it up to Dr. Bryant, that there were people who live off-post because they had to, but they want to bring their kids on-base. But there's just no room. And I do say post because that's an Army word.
Yeah. And that came up, that also came up earlier this year, when we closed the school, when parents, military parents were looking for an option. So are we, will we, I guess we will survive until, because I know both schools in that right around Ursa Major are packed.
They are. Orion, Aurora, and mine are all packed.
All packed.
All packed. So we'll work through it. I think, you know, we don't have a lot of options at this point. We may end up with relos, for all I know right now, to be able to take care of it. But we are going to take care of the kids on-base.
Okay. Let's go to Member Wilson, and then Member Lessons. Oh, I did. Okay. Member Lessons?
Those are all elementary schools?
Mm-hmm.
So what are we doing for our secondary students who attend, I mean, whose families are part of our military service?
On that dividing line between what was Fort Richardson and Elmandorf, on the Air Force side of that line, they go to Central, by and large, and Bartlett. And on what was formerly known as the Army side, they go to Greening and Eagle River High.
Or they can zone exempt wherever they want to go.
Or zone exempt, which many do.
Yes. So do those schools have additional supports for the students who believe their parents to be indestructible?
Well, the base certainly has.
Liaisons.
Liaisons and other supports. The military is a little different, where we can't control what revenue we get. When the military needs supports to support a major unit deployment, they get them from wherever they have to get them, generally in support of those families.
Okay. Member Jacobs?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the presentation, and I think it is a once-in-a-building lifetime opportunity, to be sure. Colonel Mueller, thank you for your time, the presentation, your service. And Mr. Anderson, if you aren't invincible up to these last couple cycles, you're pretty close. Thank you.
Okay, seeing and hearing none. Colonel, thank you very much. Mr. Anderson, thank you very much. And with that, we are at the end of our agenda for today. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn into executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations, and contracts.
Okay. Moved in second to adjourn to executive session. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, we are adjourned to executive session for legal contracts and personnel updates.